I guess we'll start, hopefully, let, um, maybe for you or one of the town attorneys, talk about the petition that was filed and what does that mean, and then we'll go into revisions here, and then the chair closes. Okay? Perfect. Let me just, just in time, my watch is actually real fast. Seven oh three, seven oh four.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Stratford, uh, town, I mean Stratford Zoning Commission meeting for, um, this is a special administrative session on Wednesday, October 24th, if I'm not mistaken. Um, I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7:03 PM.
Yes.
I'm sorry, August. Thank you. Um, this is an administrative session. This isn't a public hearing for those who've never been to a zoning hearing before. Uh, there was a hearing on this subject, there's actually were four public hearings on this subject, so what this is, is the zoning commission's deliberations on the James Farm Road application, the zone change, and the text amendment. Oh, with that said, I'll entertain a motion to take all three items off the table.
I make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Um, for the record, I'm default there, I'm not the chairman of zoning, I'm just serving as acting chairman tonight, just to preside over the meeting. Um, so, um, I guess this opens up to discussion of, uh, there was a formal petition that was filed that I'd like to have either, uh, town staff or town attorney just to briefly summarize what it is and what does that mean. I don't know if Attorney Florick is here who wants to, um, just briefly explain what kind of, um, some of the paperwork that has been filed.
I'll see him in the room.
Okay, uh, Jay, do you want to take a, take a brief stab at it?
Sure.
Okay. So, there was the verified pleading, um, that was presented to the zoning commission, which in my understanding, uh, considers the potential harm, uh, to the natural resources in any, um, yeah, basically, the, the potential harm to any of the natural resources in the surrounding area, the wetlands, um, and the forest. Um, but there is also the protest position, petition, which basically, um, if validly presented, um, and the petition is signed by owners of 20% of the area of the lots within 500 feet of the proposed development, uh, this would trigger the need for, uh, four votes to approve as opposed to three. So, that's the short version as the components.
Yeah, I just have a couple, a couple clarifying or technical questions regarding the petition. Uh, do we know approximately how much 20% of, of the property, I know there's a dispute on how large the property is, which could drastically affect the number of what constitutes 20%, but do we have any sort of ver, um, sense of what 20% of, of the property owners would be?
Well, I think that's part of the confusion that we're, everyone is kind of wrestling with at the moment, is the, what is the actual size of the property that's in question? If it's determined, um, at, in some form after a decision is made here that there, uh, has not been a proper subdivision, and, um, the lot is 15 acres as opposed to what's being claimed for four acres, then, um, you know, that's going to significantly, significantly change, you know, what, uh, butters have been contacted, um, so that 20%, you know, I, I don't know.
Uh, I just noticed Attorney Florick has entered the room, too. Uh, Attorney Florick, we were mentioning the petition that was filed by some of the neighbors in the area, and we're just kind of, just for, for public record, what does that mean? What is it? What's the procedural ramifications of it?
Are you talking about the protest petition or the verified?
The verified plea, I believe.
Both, I think.
Actually, both, I think, we've kind of dabbled on.
The protest petition changes the, um, number of votes required to, uh, approve a, a zone change and zoning regulations. Um, it changes it from a majority to four. If you make the finding that it's a valid protest petition, that is, that it has been signed by the owners of 20% of the lot area, um, within, I think it's 500 feet of the proposed, um, uh, site. The verified complaint or the verified petition doesn't change the voting, but, again, if you find that it's valid, and all you have to, to find to determine that it's valid is that it alleges harm or injury to, uh, uh, public interests in natural resources, water, et cetera, et cetera, and that it's under oath, it's got to be under oath. These allegations have to be made to the best of the knowledge of the petitioner under oath. Then, if you make that finding, then you are bound and obligated to consider whether there is any impact, uh, of this project on those natural resources that you've, uh, um, the interest of the public in those natural resources that you've found. And, uh, so you have to consider that, and if you find that it, that it does impact these natural resources, um, you are bound and obligated to determine whether any feasible and reasonable alternatives exist to the project as constituted that would protect or take away the harm from these natural resources. You know, that could be scaling the project down, relocating it, any number of things. But whatever you find has to be grounded in the evidence that you heard before you, that was introduced, uh, by the, by the petitioners. If you, um, if you found that, that the natural resources were impacted, uh, and that, um, there was no feasible or reasonable alternative to the project that would protect those resources, then you conceivably could deny the project, uh, citing the environmental interest as the public interest that you're, you know, that, that is being harmed, but then you would have to do a secondary analysis to that and, and determine whether that interest in protecting that, uh, those specific natural resources overrode the public interest in affordable housing. You'd have to make both of those, um, determinations in order to deny the project. If you found that there was a feasible and reasonable alternative to the existing project and you culled from the evidence, uh, conditions that, uh, could be, uh, attached to an approval, then you could approve the project subject to those conditions. But that's what the verified complaint does, it forces you, it makes it obligatory on you to determine whether or not there's any, um, impact on, uh, uh, natural resources, wildlife, et cetera, which the public has an interest in.
Okay, uh, any questions to Attorney Florick regarding, I guess, any of these two procedural motions that were made to the commission? Um, I think, um, what would be useful is to, either to support whether or not these petitions have any merit in our justifications for approval or denial, to cite specific reasons for that, which we started to do very intensely at the last zoning meeting, so without further ado, um, I know there's been some revisions that everyone is just going over right now about for reasons for approval and reasons for denial. I guess we'll open up to Jay, if you want to just kind of go over some, more, more summary of what the revisions or additions or subtractions were from them, because we saw the original draft last meeting.
I'm just reading over quickly the, um, reasons for approval of the application. Okay, number 12, "The applicant shall provide documentation to ensure that emergency apparatus can gain access to the site and maneuver within the site in a timely manner." That was one that we added. Um, number 13, "Dedicated space for weekly garbage storage and recycling, which can adequately handle the density proposed at the site, shall be provided. A letter from the Health Department confirming such adequacy shall be provided." Number 14, um, "Sign stating confined spaces, permit required for containment systems on-site. Containment system shall be maintained and inspected at least once per year. And a plan for snow removal and storage shall be submitted prior to the issuance of any zoning compliance applications." Uh, I, I was a little unclear on number 14, I just wanted to make sure that I did get the wording right, um, because I'm not an expert in confined spaces, so, um, does that about cover what we were thinking of?
It's very good, it's very good, because we need to make people aware of that, that's quite a few of them around town that aren't even being looked at, and it's a big uptick right now with construction worker deaths going on.
So, those were the, those were the only additions that we made to the potential reasons for, uh, an approval. Um, potential reasons, does anyone have any questions on that before I move on to the next, the potential reasons for denial? All right. Um, so the first, we, we, I changed the structure around a little bit on some of these, so if you see the, the order is a little different, I did some revision on the order. Um, potential reasons for denial, uh, one via the verified pleading, "The zoning commission has found that the proposed project is reasonably likely to have an impact and unreasonably injuring the public's interest in protecting the subject, wetlands, and the flora and fauna within these wetlands. The commission firmly ascertains that no such alternatives exist, uh, that can protect the public interest and, and the protection of the natural resources involved outweigh the public interest's need for affordable housing." Number two, we moved some of the potential reasons and moved, and just basically located them underneath this number two as a subset. Uh, "The proposed text amendment does not comply with all sections of the Connecticut State statutes regarding section 8-30G in the following ways. A, proposed, the proposed affordability plan and proposed text amendment, section 29.1.4, does not comply with section 8-30G.6 as a set-aside development. B, the proposed application has not, has not designated a person, entity, or agency that will be responsible for the duration of any affordable restrictions for the administration of the affordability plan and its compliance with the income limits in sale price or rental restrictions in section 8-30G. C, no sample calculation of the maximum sales prices or rents of the intended affordable dwelling units have been submitted for review. D, the project does not appear to comply with section 8-30G.8.2D. Uh, "The site does not presently have access to the, to water or sewage disposal, disposal," and are not guaranteed approvals or access to such public utilities. "The plans submitted do not show in detail how and where sewer disposal and water supply will be provided." I made, there were some changes to number four, I'll just read the whole thing, "The plans submitted were incomplete, insufficient, or lacked the necessary detail per town engineer, health department, public works, fire department, police department, and emergency medical services to allow the zoning commission to make an informed decision. The applicant was unable to provide accurate information regarding the actual size of the property, whether proper notice has been given to all abutting property owners, and whether accurate deeds have actually been recorded at the town clerk's office." Okay, let's see. Uh, number eight, just some wording revisions here, "There appear to be some, some form of direct, indirect impact on the incidental wetlands located on the subject property, in particular, the pied bilge duck and the eastern box turtle. The zoning commission is in firm agreement with the conservation administrator, uh, that the applicant should submit an application to the inland wetlands and water course commission to better understand the related direct or indirect impacts the development will have on the ecosystem." We just added, and number nine, we just added the implied overhead power lines. Uh, "The applicant does not have the necessary easement encroachment permits regarding the proposed retaining walls proximity to the overhead power lines." Okay, number 15, and this was just a typo error on my last one, but there was a change, "Dedicated space for weekly garbage and storage recycling is not sufficient based on the proposed density. In addition, the proposed location for the inadequate garbage and recycling, for the inadequate garbage and recycling is not well-positioned for easy access." Okay, number 17, "No snow removal plan in place in the event of moderate to heavy precipitation." Number 18, "Emergency apparatus will be impeded and response time slowed to James Farm Road area when sewer and water lines are being trenched." The proposed, number 19, "The proposed, project poses a threat of contamination regarding all site work to the surrounding well, wells, water system, well-water systems in the surrounding area." Number 20, "Project poses a threat to the surrounding septic systems regarding all site work required." And I believe that is it.
Okay, um, any revisions, any comments, any concerns with, with this, uh, potential decision? If not, um, how would, procedurally, um, well, the best thing would be to vote as one entire packet on the zone change, text amendment, and site plan, because ultimately it comes down to the site plan, whatever the next steps are beyond zoning.
Correct. I think it's, it's in the best interest of the zoning commission to vote on, um, as a whole, all three petitions as one.
Okay, um, before we call a vote, is there any, any statements or any questions, last call pretty much, to, um, to discuss the issue?
I, I just want to clarify something. I thought in the last administrative session, we said we were going to vote on each application separately, and I think that was also recommended by Attorney Florick.
Yeah, that's true, and then thinking about it, I changed my mind simply because the, um, presence of the protest petition requiring differing amounts of votes for the site plan as opposed to the zone change, um, and the regulations, I thought might make it a little bit difficult and, and theoretically could provide, uh, inconsistent, uh, determinations. So I think it's better, from that standpoint, if you were to deal with all three of them at one time.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I should have clarified when I made that statement.
Yeah, so, so I guess there, upon further meditation, yeah, so I guess this was something upon further meditation and consultation, um, zoning staff and zoning council decided, you know, kind of looked into it and kind of came to the decision that, um, looking at the project as, looking at the petition as, as a whole as opposed to a sum of parts would be the best way to approach this, whether it's for approval or denial or approval of stipulations. Uh, before I call a vote, uh, I want to say that we spent at least four hearings, I counted up the hours, it's 22 to 23 hours of actual public hearing we actually held on the subject, and we've also had multiple administrative sessions that I didn't tabulate to that time. Uh, this, the commission has demonstrated a lot of poise, uh, dealt with a lot of complicated issues and complicated testimonies. I've never seen testimony so intense in my time on the commission in three years. Um, it, this is, maybe Commissioner Forster might be able to hearken back to the Avalon Bay stuff to find something that was comparable in complexity, uh, but this is, this is a very public, this is a very transparent commission, and this, this whole process has been, uh, transparent, but everyone here has made tremendous personal sacrifice to attend these hearings, to attend these meetings, and to delve in the subject matter that many of us aren't environmental scientists or engineers or anything like that, so it's, um, we had to grapple with very intense issues. I'm very proud of the work and service on this commission and, and very proud to serve the four of you, and with, uh, Administrator Urbanski and Attorney Florick on this, on this matter, just because it's, um, you don't see them like this. This, this is not regular zoning, this is zoning on steroids, for lack of a better term. I also want to thank the public for also showing tremendous interest in this application and providing very well-informed and very, very passionate testimony, isn't just passionate testimony, but it was passionate testimony with, with thorough consideration and thorough thought. With that said, I, I'm having a hard time to support this project, um, because I think a lot of the issues outweigh the need for affordable housing, just this particular site plan and, and by extension, the zone change and the text amendment that, that spun off because of this outweigh the public need. The density does create a public safety issue, does create a public health issue, and does create an environmental issue. I think the verifying plea has merit to it, because the retaining wall, uh, if that is breached, that contaminates the whole property and not just that property, surrounding properties as well, whether it's four acres or 15 acres, it doesn't really matter at that point. Uh, contamination is contamination. The other contamination issue I have, because of the density of this project, is that you have potential, they're eventually going to need sewer hookup in order to be compliant with 830G, which goes beyond zone, WPCA and other authorities do look at that. Uh, however, the construction of that pipeline or that sewer system, one, as, as Commissioner Giorgiano has noted, causes a public health, public safety issue to the actual construction worker and the maintenance worker. On, in addition to that, we have heard testimony that there could be potential contamination into wells if there's significant blasting that occurs at, at Julia Ridge in, uh, the greater Orinode and greater Roosevelt Forest region. And I think that, to me, ultimately, is what gives me trepidation about this application. In addition to that, I do believe that there are protected species that I need to see a more thorough plan if there, if it were ever to come up, on how the pied bilge duck or the eastern box turtle, turtle would be protected. It's one thing to say, it's another thing to demonstrate it. And I think, uh, the, the petitioner has, has good intentions, and affordable housing can be a good thing in the right place, right time, and with the right site plan, however, I just don't feel that this particular site plan, and by extension, the zone amendment and the, and the zone change, uh, fit that bill. I don't know if anyone else feels the same way, or if they have additional thoughts on that.
I would like to make a comment, um, as acting chair, um, Mr. Fuller, I agree totally. I think we, as a commission, have put a lot of time and effort into this, not knowing a lot of the expertise, you know, sides of it. Administrator Jay has helped us get over that and get through that. I think it's a complicated petition, and I think we've, we've tried our best to put everything together and try to, to vision what it would be. I do agree that I'd be hard to approve this, this petition. I think it needs to be looked at a little bit more in detail. I think the, um, for one, I think that the amount, you know, the, is it 15 acres, is it divided, is it not? Um, you know, should it come before wetlands? I think it should, I mean, I, I don't know, I just, and there's a lot of things here that I think we just, um, um, we just have to go with that, so, thank you, and thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, any other comments, questions? Anyone want to make a motion? And I would recommend the motion would be, however you feel on the subject, the motion should be a motion to approve all three petitions, and then if you, if you're for it, vote yes, and if you're against it, vote no. Uh, typically, it's very rare to have a vote to deny as opposed to vote to approve, uh, and then based on the number of votes, um, that, and then the decision is hereby rendered. Um, should we make comment to the, the petitions? Yes. Um, how do people feel about the verify plea and the protest petition? Is there, is there, do people find merit to it?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I do believe that the protest position does meet the requirement of 20% of the area of the lots, regardless of how you bifurcate the property, if you subdivide it, don't subdivide it, I think we've, I think that, that threshold's already been established. Um, it, as, as for the verified pleading, is there a potential for harm? Granted, there's always a potential for harm, so since the threshold is lower, I would, I would say that the verified pleading hasn't been met, however, uh, there are some established protocols in place for endangered species. We heard in testimony the protocol that the state has for the, uh, box turtle, and that the applicant had indicated that they would exercise that protocol. So there are some, uh, means of, uh, alternatives as presented, but there is always a potential for harm. Now, how you graduate that scale on a percentage of 0% to 100% i- is open for interpretation, but, uh, with regards to the potential, and since that's the language that's used, uh, I would say that both the verified pleading and the protest petition did meet the standard. So I think that as a commission, we should agree that those standards have been met.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just to, just to clarify for Mr. Forster, um, the standard is that, based on the evidence you heard, that, um, it is, um, it is likely, well, best, based on the evidence you heard, that either you find that there will be damage to the protected resources, or it's reasonably likely, that's really the standard you have to meet, reasonably likely.
Right, reasonably likely, okay. So I, I would say that there's a reasonable likelihood that that would exist. So I think that the commission should, wait, there's no formal vote, I don't believe, because it's not part of the petition process, but I think the consensus should be of the commission that we are in agreement that that threshold is met, and we should put that on the public record.
I, I concur with Commissioner Forster on that, too. I think it's part of our justification to the ultimate decision that the commission would, would take, uh, to, to state the, uh, verify, to verify both the verification plea and the protest petition, and to elaborate that in reasons for approval or reasons for denial, um, based off that, and use that kind of as additional justification, and that the, you know, the public need is, is undermined by a particular application. And I don't think there is a reasonable modification to this particular site plan that could be made, that could mollify this many, these many concerns. Is it possible a future petition down the road? Could be, we're going to hypotheticals and speculative, because we don't have that petition before us. It could be two units, it could be 200 units, we don't know what the lay of the land is, and we don't know what that site plan is. So, future petitions are future petitions, we don't know them until we see them. Uh, but for this particular plan that's before us, I don't think there could be any reasonable modifications that could be made to, to make, uh, the environmental impact lessened, or to make the sewer issue lessened, or to make fire apparatus accessibility and maneuverability around the site plan safer. Uh, any, any other thoughts or comments before we take a vote?
Mr. Urbanski has one.
Yeah, I, I think that something else that we should maybe discuss, uh, before we decide to take a vote is, for the record, indicating whether or not the public interests that we're discussing here, the protection of the wetlands, the protection of the box turtle, the, all the species, the flora, the fauna that are, that are in that area, the, the drinking water, the well systems, um, do those public interests outweigh the need the well systems, do those public interests outweigh the need for the public's, the public interest in affordable housing?
Mr. Chairman, from my standpoint, I think that some of them do and enough of them to indicate that there is a concern for public interest. Some of them don't, in my estimation. For example, fire and emergency vehicle effectiveness and safety, you know, fire departments submitted a letter but didn't show up personally to give us any testimony. So when we're talking about turning radiuses in the property, response times, things of that nature, they really, they didn't show up. They sent a letter, which was very generic. In terms of police and EMS, you know, I don't think there's going to be any issues regarding responding to the location, particularly when you take into consideration some of the state projects that have been undertaken, such as total reconstruction of South Main Street, the River Road project, which roads are completely closed. I did not hear any testimony to indicate that the roads are completely closed. Now, on the other, other side, you know, is there potential harm to the wetlands? I think we've just discussed that there is potential harm there. Is there potential harm to other resources like well water? That's still a gray area and questionable. So I think that some of the thresholds have been met, maybe not all of them, but enough to indicate, in my estimation anyways, that the public interest is potentially impacted.
I would concur. In the, in the draft document for the reasons for denial, I also take issue with it does not have water pollution control authority authorization or approval. That always comes after land use board deliberations, whether it's zoning or zoning appeals or the planning commission. I would, I would like to see that strike just because that's, that's really not a, WPCA always comes in after the fact, not pre-zoning, comes after zoning or zoning appeals, depending on the appropriate agency.
Was that number 11 on the document that?
That would be number 11, correct.
Okay. You know, I think you actually said that last two weeks ago and I didn't take it off.
To look at a sewer issue as opposed to mandating whether it has WPCA authority before it's even eligible to apply to the WPCA, I believe creates an unfair burden on, on the petitioner. Any other comments or?
Just a quick comment. I do believe that this should have gone to inland wetland before it came to the zoning commission. I just want to put that on record. That's, that's my feeling.
What was that?
This should have gone to inland wetland before it even hit the zoning commission. And I just want to put that on record as my, how I feel about this.
Which is usually the normal procedure on whether it's affordable housing or not affordable housing. Usually wetlands that-
There's too many holes and unanswered questions when it comes to inland wetlands. And I think that's where it should have gone first. They should have made a ruling on it first and then it should have been brought over to the zoning commission. We should not be deciding the answers to those questions.
And we might also be overstepping our authority, acting as de facto inland wetlands commission.
Exactly.
Okay, well, that's it. Any other final comments or final points of consideration?
Yeah, I think one more thing that we might want to discuss for the record is if, are there any alterations or changes, reasonable changes to the project that we think could be made that would not compromise or, that would not compromise any of the public interests that were, that you all are kind of concerned about at the moment?
Well, that's kind of a difficult one to answer because it's, because we don't, one, we don't know what the actual plot is. We don't know if it's 3.7 acres or 15 acres. And that affects the whole project. That affects the whole site plan. So that's also, we're dealing with something that's really, we're not dealing with the full facts here. We're doing, we're kind of, it's like a jigsaw puzzle of a couple, of the Eiffel Tower. We know what the Eiffel Tower looks like, but we're still missing a couple pieces of it. And, but, but those couple pieces are very important for the aesthetics and for the completeness of the project. What sort of modifications could be made? I don't know if it's reasonable. The density is a huge issue here.
You talked about density?
Well, I mean, I think Dave makes a really good point because, you know, if you had a flat parcel of land, you might be able to move some things around. You know, given the topography and the amount of fill that needs to come in, I think it's, and with the retaining wall that's needed along the backside, it's a challenge.
That's where I feel like with the fire trucks. I mean, God forbid there's a fire. Well, you know, it's chaos and it's very dense. And to just have one car not pull into the parking spot all the way or have it sticking out enough, that just blows the whole truck trying to get around the corner there or whatever. And, you know, there's just so many negatives. You just hit on one there. We don't even know where the wall's going. We don't even know if they got to shorten it up. It's just, I think the cart got in front of the horse here.
I would think with a density reduction, I think that all the expert testimony we've heard would change drastically. So we really can't, we can't really comment on that because we're, we're listening to what the experts said based on the 72 units. And if we're talking about density, it's going to completely change. So it's really a moot point.
Yeah. Therefore, it's unreasonable because it's, it's something we can't really tangibly deal with. So therefore, I think it answers the question, could this be modified in any way? Perhaps something could be done with the driveway. Perhaps something could be done to soften that a little bit, widen it or blunt the angle a bit. Perhaps buildings could be pitched certain ways, but still, those are very minor. Those don't really address the fundamental problems of this petition.
Right. I mean, the zoning commission's not here to redesign, redevelop projects on behalf of developers. But we have to act upon what's in front of us, not speculate on what could be in front of us at some other point for the same parcel or a similar parcel in town. So we have to look at each one individually. And a lot of these issues, I think, would be addressed if the density factor was to be changed. The entire scope of the project could be changed. And I'm not just saying if you change it from 72 units to 70, I don't know what the magic number is. I know it's not 70 or 72. However, if the density changes, then the whole site plan changes and the whole complexity of it changes. And it's really not, I understand the state statutes, but it's really not the zoning commission's authority or responsibility, from my standpoint, having been a commissioner before, that we should be redesigning plans for, on behalf of developers. That's the developer's job if the project is denied, to re-investigate or reevaluate their petition and determine what changes they feel they can make and still make it a viable project on their side. And then come back to the zoning commission or whatever the case might be, or abandon the project or do whatever they choose to do. That's up to them. But I don't, I think the generalities are that the density is something that will change all of those complexities and as a result, would change all of the factors and have the commission take another look at it and determine whether or not those factors still exist in a new plan or not. In this current plan, they do exist.
Commissioner Forrester is absolutely correct and I agree with him.
In these petitions, as far as this one being so complicated, I know sometimes the petitioner has not gone as far as they should have with some of the things like the water, the sewer. I mean, their, their contractor, can't think of the word I'm trying to use, you know, showed us some, some scales. But, you know, we had this problem before that to what degree do these petitioners go to, to come before us? Am I correct, Dave? You're saying that sometimes they don't go thoroughly through everything, but it costs money to do whatever. And they kind of want to give us a general thing. But a petition like this, the scope is unbelievable. I mean, we need, we definitely need more information, I think.
I concur with that as well. It's, every petition is really its own animal, as Commissioner Forrester has, has addressed as well. So we get varying degrees of detail and completeness with every petition. I remember the condo units right across from DeLuca Field was the most detailed plan I've ever seen on the zoning commission. It was to the T. It was more detailed than some final site plans this commission has reviewed, which is to the credit of the petitioner for putting something that complete for us. And we have other times, sometimes it's really handwritten notes submitted to the commission as official documentation. You know, you see, you see a whole spectrum of proposed developments and proposed land use projects. This one is, I think there needed to be more detail in it. This is, and to Commissioner Forrester's point is, reasonable is something that is not a redesign. It is something that's akin to a final site plan review, some small modification to soften a project. Maybe it's a pitch of a driveway. It's not reducing 72 units to 32 units or whatever it might be. That's a completely new plan with its own set of petition, which should have its own hearing because it's its own plan. That's the way how it goes. So with that said, I don't know if there's any more we need to discuss tonight unless we want to take the vote.
No, the only thing that I would think, I'd really like to put on the public record, there's a few things about, that should be stated, that the zoning commission as a body, not necessarily the individuals that are sitting at right now, but the zoning commission as a body, has recently approved affordable housing applications. So it's not as if the zoning commission is an anti-affordable-housing body. Given the right project and the right location at the right place, with the right conditions, the zoning commission will approve it. So it's gone on record as doing that. I think that should be noted for the public record. I think the need for, personally, I think the need for affordable housing still does exist in Stratford. I mean, besides the state percentages and reports and records that show that we are under the 10% threshold, I think it's pretty obvious that the town probably does need it. And I do have to say that in my four-plus years of experience of sitting on the zoning commission, I have never seen a town council try to interject themselves in a zoning matter more so than this one has. It's extremely disappointing from my standpoint that we would have to deal with speculation about eminent domain and purchase of property and all the closed-door, back-room, you know, executive session discussions that go on that previous councils have been blasted for by members of the current council, I might add, that seem to be okay to do in this instance. And it's, it's created an undue stir and it has not, I don't think it has caused any change in our deliberations, but I think it has caused a change in public perception that, oh, it doesn't matter what zoning does because the town council's going to ride in in their white horse and take the property away from them anyways. And I think that that sets a bad tone when you have a separate body trying to come in and interject themselves. Individual council people who represent their district who want to come before us and speak, as Councilwoman Manistin, I'm all for that. That's fine. They're elected to represent your district. But to have discussions and negotiations behind the scenes casts a cloud over what goes on. And as I said, I've never seen it in the four years that I served in the early 2000s. And of course, certainly in the short term that I've been back here, I haven't seen it. And it's the first time that, that this has cropped up. And I've got to say that I'm concerned about it. Thank you.
I concur with Commissioner Forrester's comments about that. He said it very eloquently. I have additional reservations about that. In fact, I filed a Freedom of Information complaint against the town council as a private citizen, not as a zoning commissioner, which I actually received correspondence back from the commission this week, the Freedom of Information Commission. It was an illegal executive session.
Absolutely.
By all eight members of both political parties. This is not one council person over and over. This is the entire board saying, do as we say, not as we do. And we are in an autonomous, elected board. We're a separate branch of the local government. We have autonomy. We don't interfere in council affairs. We make recommendations. Council can make recommendations to us. Representatives, zoning, planning, council, whoever, has every right to address the other boards. Like, sometimes we see Councilman Kadim address projects that are in his district. That's all fair. That's all well and good. That's what a good councillor does. But the board as a whole, the council as a whole, I believe, overstepped its authority. And it's trying to interfere with a zoning affair. It's also, heart hurts, not the zoning deliberation per se, but the next steps that happen after zoning. It could compromise the town's ability to defend itself against a potential bad project. And the council has compromised that. And it's disgusting. It is wrong and the council should be ashamed of itself.
Now, back to the petition. I do not think that we should be making a motion to quote-unquote approve and voting it down because I think we have to go on the public record as to what the denial would be. So for the purpose of discussion prior to a vote, I will make a motion to deny petitions one, two, and three for the reasons stated in the denial brief that we have exclusive of item number 11, which is WPCA. And I will make that motion for the purpose of at least discussion at this point in time.
Do I have a second, Commissioner, Commissioner Peppin? We're now open for discussion, up for discussion. I believe that the reasons that we discussed and enumerated in this document do outweigh these public interests, particularly about the density, particularly about environment and potential contamination issues and some firefighter access issues, do outweigh the need for affordable housing with this particular site plan. In addition to that, the zone text amendment, the regulation change, proposed change for zoning regulations, I feel is also inappropriate, too, because it's germane only to one particular area, one particular property, whether it's a three-acre or 15-acre property, as opposed to thinking of zoning in a more holistic sense of certain sections of town to have certain residential or commercial development sectors to them. This is trying to fundamentally change a zone to appease a project. And that's not good zoning. I don't, and I think that also harms the public interest because now you have a situation where a developer could come in, rewrite the zoning regulations for their project before they get their project approved. And that creates bad legislation, bad public policy, is bad for the public interest. And by default, the zone change, if the zoning regulation is bad, therefore the zone change is inherently bad, too. One precedes the other. Any, any other discussion? If not, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of Commissioner Forrester's motion to-
Roll call?
Oh, yes. We'll do it by roll call. Roll call vote on the matter on the floor, motion made by Commissioner Forrester, seconded by Commissioner Peppin, to deny the zone, the text amendment, the zone change and the site plan regarding 795 James Farm Road. I'll start with the First Planning District, the U. Commissioner Ferentz imposed.
Just for clarification, since we have a motion on the table to deny, a yes vote means it's denied and a no vote means it's not denied.
Correct. For pure clarification, so no one is speculative on where we stand, to vote yes on this would be to vote this project down, to vote for a denial. A yes would be not, not necessarily proving the project, but you're against denying this particular application.
Great. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Representing three and four, I say yes.
Representing seven and eight, I say yes.
Representing nine and 10, I say yes.
Representing Planning District Three, Council District Five and Six, I vote yes. A motion to deny is approved, 5-0.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner, Commissioner Giorgiano, all votes in favor. Chair votes aye. We're adjourned at 7:51.